Good morning. If you'd like to call to order, they go back to 17 for supervisors needing more call please.
Supervisor Carroll?
Here.
Supervisor Elias?
That's it.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valdez?
Present.
Chair Bronson?
Here.
On the record show, all members are present.
Please rise. This point is not here. The red eye is clear for the invitation, so we will rise to the pledge of allegiance to the land of Supervisor Carroll.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, on the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor, what supervisor Liz?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I ask for a moment of personal privilege.
Proceed.
I'd like to make mention of a good friend of Pima County who passed away this weekend, a librarian who worked for us in our system, especially spending much of his career over at a public neighborhood center, and that was Frank De La Cruz. Frank De La Cruz was really a man whose soul was big, whose heart was caring, who defended those with less, who was a community activist, one of the founders of the Chicano Movement here in Tucson in the late 60s. But he was always humble, he was always kind, and you know, you couldn't really tell what kind of movement Frank was in all the time because you'd say, "Hi Frank," and he'd go, "Hello." But if you asked him about the local movies that were out right now, he could tell you some very intellectual descriptions of those movies. He was a good-hearted person, and we all mourn his loss and pray for his family in hopes that they can survive this test. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Elias. We will now proceed to pause for pause, and Officer Mike introduce us to Izabelle Bobo.
Morning. My name is Mike Echobarger with Pima Local Care Center, and today I brought Bobo. Bobo is an eight-year-old Sharpeay Bit Bull mix, very friendly, but he has a kind of a sad story. His owner just recently passed away just a few days ago, and he was turned into our center. So he's kind of looking, he's a little confused now, he's looking for a new place called home. He's very, he's a little overweight, he's about 101 pounds, and when I first read some of the stories about him that said that he liked car rides, so I was worried how I was going to get in the truck, but he kind of just, he did, he does like car rides, he jumped halfway in the truck for me and I picked him up the rest of the way. He doesn't really like treats, but he enjoys walks. He's very general on leash and gets along with other animals. He's made visits with other animals and there's been no incidents. We're not very sure, we don't believe he was around children, but he's kind of a general soul, so I don't see a problem. I haven't seen any behavioral incidents with him. And due to his age, his adoption fee is waived, he just carries a $16 license fee, he's already neutered, microchipped, and vaccinated, so he can go home today. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Mike.
Now, Senator Cahero Bedford is here today, and she told me she didn't want the dog.
Yeah, but her neighbor does, the person she's sitting next to, I think.
And Mark wants the dog, is that it? Mark doesn't want the dog. But Senator Cahero Bedford said that she would adopt 100 kittens if we brought them over here, so. That was the wrong thing to say to a supervisor.
Because we've got them.
I'll just go. Thank you for your support, though.
All right, we have one change to the agenda, the regular agenda, page four, item 18, Health and Services, hearing, appeal of a hearing on administrator's decision. The accountant has requested this item be continued for 30 days to the board meeting of December 15, 2015. If there are no objections, we will so amend the agenda. Now we move on, we have no executive session, so we move on to call to the public. Remind everybody we've got three minutes, and abide by the rules of civility. Christopher Cole.
Good morning all. My name is Christopher Cole, First Vice Chair of Pima County Libertarian Party. The purpose of government is to protect the rights of the people. And by their actions, politicians seem to think that their purpose is to steal the rights of the people and to steal the wealth of the people. Pima County does not manage its money very well. I'm talking about the money, of course, that you confiscate from taxpayers. How many thousands, if not millions of dollars are you going to approve on the consent calendar today? You know, it would be nice if you put right next to the item your legal authority for spending that money. Because there are some people, myself is, I am one of them, that say you probably don't have the authority to spend that money on that project, that charity, that whatever it is. It would be nice if you could justify legally the money that you spend, at least the perception is the money that you spend so recklessly. Pima County is extremely poor. Pima County can afford to spend money on infrastructure, Pima County can afford to spend money on health and safety, it cannot afford to spend money on crony politics, it cannot afford to spend money on, gee, the 1% want their recreation subsidized. Pima County cannot support that, it doesn't have the money for that. The five of you need to start managing the money you take from the people a lot better than you do now, and the first step on that is make a legal justification for the money that you spend. The second step, something I brought up before, put everything in absolute priorities, and put, like say, the Pima County Sheriff's Department first, the Pima County Health Department second, and so forth and so on, and show to the people that you have their priorities in mind and you have their priorities straight. Thank you very much.
And I'm sorry Senator Cahero Bedford, I forgot to recognize you. Thanks for coming. I know three of you that are here on the one item we continued till the 15th of December. You're welcome to, we continued the item, you could speak at the time we reached the item, if not, we will see you on the 15th if you don't wish to speak today.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Keith Van Honegen?
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Keith Van Honegen. I'm a Pima County resident. All the niceties are gone, my Senator friend is gone, so she doesn't have to listen to me, obviously. I'm here to, like you know, I've been coming down here to these meetings and to the city for the last seven odd years. I listen to local talk radio all day long, that's why I know what I know, not to mention my friends, the informers inside the city and county government that snitch on you all for being corrupt. Now, last Friday, I was listening to Bill Buckmaster, and he is the greatest little friend of yours, isn't he? Because any day that you listen to his show, you can hear your local city and county propaganda ministers. Last Friday was Chuck Huckleberry's turf, where he essentially mocked the citizens of Pima County. Wants to blame the old people here, the state there, scratch it, George Bush in there. Point being is, no, it didn't pass because that was a bond for your friend, and we know it. We can't help it, the city's going through a constitutional crisis with their voting now. I just hope and pray that the next elections for county board supervisors, we can eliminate four, and then we can fire Chuck Huckleberry, the man who put together, along with his friends, a billion and a half when it was done, bond package to bankrupt Pima County. Now Chuck, you appear to be about 75 years old, didn't you? You would have been bed and buried, long gone, before the crash happened. Maybe that's why we didn't vote yes on it, because we knew better, because you don't. Because for the length of your term, I don't see a higher percentage of good than I see of evil. It's not your money, playing simple, as Ray Smirks. Man, I hope we can get rid of you. Have a nice day. Now I'm done, Sharon.
Jerry Ottenbunny?
Madam Chairman and Board of Supervisors, my name is Jerry Ottenbunny, and I live in the North Valley. While I thought last week's comments about the defeat of the 1815 land dark bonds were very interesting, this was not a close race. The majority of the voters, over 60%, hello, over 60% in some cases educated themselves and voted on the bonds, voted no on the bonds. Perhaps it was due to the fact that the earlier bond money, in some cases, was not spent as advertised, according to Andrea Kelly's article in the Arizona Daily Star. I did find it interesting that Mrs. Levy stated that the bonds would cost $17 a year. She apparently did not read the little booklet that Pima County sent to the voters that stated on page nine, a different, much higher amount than was mentioned. Then Mr. Barney of the Tucson Metropolitan Chamber stated no on the bond people had some wrong information, even though the information was gleaned on the Pima County website. Perhaps he should have read it also. Operation Maintenance was not included and slight difference in interest. Mr. Larry Hacker, who is the co-chairman of the Yes on the Bonds, didn't bother to mention, which was reported September 30th on the ADI, that his son Alexander was a statutory agent for BioCell. Now, this is the bond, is a bio-industry organization of Southern Arizona. I believe this would be a conflict of interest because Mr. Hacker is chairman of the Bond Advisory Committee, co-chairman of the Yes on the Bonds Committee, and his son Alexander Hacker is a statutory agent for BioCell, which would have managed the Oral Valley Accelerator using $15 million for the bond. On Arizona Illustrated on Sunday night, Tim Steller of the Arizona Daily Star's comments were interesting. He stated that many of the no voters did not trust Pima County government, that no voter said enough is enough, especially when you three supervisors and sometimes, Mr. Carroll, and Mr. Huckleberry, who makes $320,000 plus benefits, which is the second highest paid in the United States, have raised, oh so too for the fifth poor city, have raised taxes again and again and again, and that are expected, and they're expected to live within the means, why can't you, without continually raising your budget, live within your means? Thank you.
Richard Hernandez?
Good morning, Pima County. I'm Richard Hernandez. At the last board meeting, I saw a dozen or so folks from the northwest side, over by the mall up in that area, who had some concerns. One lady said to you, "Tell me what to do." Maybe you don't remember that, but I did. I was really disappointed that I didn't see the leadership of this committee come to her aid. Why, I know it's inappropriate for you to talk to us during the call of the audience, it is not inappropriate for you to direct your employee, Chuck Huckleberry, to do something. If you're not responsive to the people you represent, then what are you doing? I was under the impression by being an elected official, it's your job to represent the people, and you had a bunch of good folks, taxpayers that were here, that asked for your help. No one listened. The other thing I saw at the last board meeting I did not witness was a news piece that I saw Supervisor Moon Valdez talk about the removal of a question if you're a felon or if you've been arrested. I'm not really sure what the question was, but when I saw that, it was a second of relief. That's a good thing. But then I'm going to ask Supervisor Valdez, is that just something you say in election time, or is that something you honestly believe? Can we get past errors of five years ago, or 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, or 20 years What we're talking about is integrity, do you stand for what you say? It's not too late, Pima County Board, the election's still 11 months away. Those people up on the north side who live a long ways from my home, they deserve some response. Why is it this board doesn't direct its administrator to take his county-paid car and his large salary and get his behind out there and talk to the people? The homeless people are also part of Pima County, we need to talk to them too. A responsible government is about listening to its people. That's what this board is supposed to be doing. It's time to not lead by word, by example, that's why I'm here. Again, it's Thanksgiving time, and if you're blessed to have access, please share with someone else, and if you need a meal, you're welcome to my house. My mom's old school, she believes that if you give something to someone else, you get it back tenfold. Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody, and we're watching you, Pima County Board, all of you. Show us, don't tell us, that you're leaders. Those people up there on the north side, they need you, they're asking for your help. Help them. Thank you.
Dennis Curry?
Chair Bronson, Ford, Chuck Huckleberry. The result of the 2015 bond package was a disappointment on several fronts. I empathize with those volunteers who spent countless hours assembling the bond package and then lobbying for it. However, if we just focus on the roads, we have a 1997, $350,000 bond package with approximately $80 million left to spend and a debt to service until the year 2024. The advertised repayment has gone from a $17 million to a $19 million a year amount. Now in 2015, we're being asked, we were asking for $200 million more to repair our roads. Clearly, the elephant in the financial equation is the 1997 bond initiative, and the questions that swirl around its implementation. So the question, how is our HRF money then spent? First, I admit a lot of excellent work has been accomplished. However, it was a June 2006 Styrology Call that piqued my interest, where Pima County was on record as saying that only lawmakers or courts can influence how it spends gas tax money. Pima County Administrator Chuck Huckleberry must have said that county will continue to spend state road money on transit and other non-road uses unless the legislature or the courts make it stop. And the State Auditor General's office said there was nothing we could do about it, despite citing Pima County for misuse of those funds for the third year in a row. In audit of the county for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2005, found the county improperly spent $5 million of state highway user revenue funds and vehicle license tax money, and two previous years' audits identified another $9.7 million. The audit report said that the county should repay the money by putting general fund money into road projects. State law says the county's future tax allocations could be docked if it doesn't comply. But Huckleberry said he wasn't worried, and said we just don't agree. However, fast forward to 2015 update of the Roads to Recovery, Facts About Transportation Funding and Spending, it shows that the Board of Supervisors voted to transfer $5 million from the general fund. So the question on the table is, are we still reallocating HRF money to other projects at the expense of our roads? Or have we stopped and are now paying back those funds in 2015? The other concern of this race is, is that if the county is continually defending itself in court, defending itself against willful or negligent actions in regards to its budgetary practices, it comes a burden for the taxpayers to fund this legal defense. What good could that money have that news for?
Thank you. Marty Wyver? Wyver, Wyver?
Both.
Neither.
Mahalaba.
Okay, is it Marty anyways?
Actually Marty.
Okay.
It's Wyver, thank you. I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to address you regarding a matter this important in the whole world, start that. For several months, members of Star Valley community have attended these sessions to solicit the assistance in resolving the release of currently approved plots in Star Valley. We have not heard anything as a result of our efforts to raise awareness. Star Valley is, Star Valley is an important asset, not only to the southwest corridor, but to Pima County as well. Through your leadership, two key documents were developed, the Star Valley Specific Plan and the Southwest Infrastructure Plan. These documents describe our community perfectly. This morning, I'm here once again to convince you that Star Valley meets these criteria and should be allowed to develop as planned. The need to continue resisting releasing the approved platform block four, which will provide 572 new homes, is not only perplexing, but is certainly not in Star Valley's best interest. If this one block is allowed to go forward, it will provide living wage construction jobs and an estimated $1 million increase in annual tax base for Pima County. Once Star Valley is completed, with over 6,000 homes, the tax base is estimated to increase over $12 million, and this doesn't even consider the commercial aspects of the development with its potential increases of the tax base and the job creation that is needed in our area. I respectfully ask once again for your immediate action on this very important issue for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherri Goumer?
Good morning. Good morning. Chair Bronson, Supervisor Huckleberry, supervisors, thank you for this opportunity, and I apologize for my voice being heavy.
Yes.
My name is Sherri Goumer. I am a resident of Pima County, I've been here for about 20 years, and a part of Southern Arizona for much longer than that. I'm also a business owner here in the city of Tucson, a member of the chair of the Tucson Metro Chamber of Directors. And although proportionately the bond questions failed to pass at the last election, as I'm sure you all know, we still have urgent needs in our community that need to be addressed. And so I want to urge you today to work quickly on an alternative plan, a plan B that addresses those urgent needs like transportation, our roads, the snow line for the water, all of those things that we need to invest in our future to help develop it and to attract and retain businesses. I also want to urge you to continue to support our local businesses and institutions that make our community what it is, University of Arizona, Raytheon, those are all things that without those businesses and institutions, we would be in a much different place. So I urge you to continue to take action and do so quickly, to not wait to address the infrastructure needs of these, like the snow line for the water.
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of call to the public. We have no executive sessions, as I mentioned, so we are now the Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards, the Flood Control District Board, item six, this is a hearing, Pima County Code Text Amendment Ordinance Number 2015-FC1, and I'm hearing it in conjunction with items 17A and B in a regular agenda, and Pima County Code Text Amendment Ordinance 2015-46, and Board of Supervisors Policy Number C2.8, Regulatory Bill of Rights, Complaints and Appeals. These are hearings, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address on those items at this time? If not, let's pleasure the board.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll go ahead and move a close pocket hearing and approve item six, including ordinance 2015-FC1, and item 17A, and include ordinance 2015-46, and item B, which approves the change of Supervisor's Policy Number C2.8. And I should mention that those last two items are on the regular agenda under Board of Supervisors sitting as Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. We have motion in a second, any discussion, any objections, hearing on, motion carries. We'll move on to the consent calendar, let's pleasure the board on the consent calendar.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
If no one has any items that they'd like to discuss separately, I'll go ahead and move consent.
Motion in a second, approve consent, makes an authority is presented, any objections, hearing on, motion carries. That brings us to clerk of the board, item eight, items eight, nine, and 10. Item eight, first petition for refund Apostolic Assembly of the Faith in Christ Jesus Grande Avenue Parcels pursuant to ARS 42-11109. Let's pleasure the board on this item.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
You know, this is difficult because mistakes were made and proper procedure was not followed in order for folks to receive a waiver of their property taxes for operating churches, but these particular facilities have operated as churches during this time, and it's unfortunate that so many years passed without that being detected, but I think that in the best interest of everybody, we should approve these items, and...
Page nine and 10.
I'm going to go ahead and move eight, nine, and 10, but what I wanted to say was that we need to send out a strict kind of warning to folks to please be on top of this and not put everybody in the situation of having to make this kind of decision, frankly. That recognizes that there are a church operating legitimately as a church, but the proper procedure has to be followed, and I don't know if we could send something to them, you know, from the treasurer's office or from the assessor's office, but just some kind of warning needs to go out to people to please follow proper procedures so we don't put ourselves in this position. The fact that we know these folks have been operating as churches on these properties gives me some kind of reassurance that I can make this motion without breaking the rules, but in all tender, it's not something that we should be doing on a regular basis. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move items eight, nine, and 10.
Sergeant.
Motion in a second, any further discussion, any objections, hearing on, motion carries. And we move now on to Industrial Development Authority.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
I'm going to go ahead and move items 11, 12, and 13, including resolutions 2015-84, 85, and 86.
Sergeant.
Motion in a second, any objections, hearing on, motion carries. Moving on to item 14, number assessor, request for redemption, request for redemption of waiver exemption pursuant to ARS 42-111530P. Let's pleasure the board.
I'll move the item, Madam Chair.
Motion in a second, any objections, hearing on, motion carries. Moving on to hearings, franchises, licenses, and permits, these are liquor license and fireworks permits, items 15- These are liquor license and fireworks permits, Items 15 and 16. These are hearings. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to these items at this time? If not, let's pleasure the Board. Madam Chair. Supervisor, I think it was Carol first. Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I'd like to go ahead and close public hearing and move for the approval on the carrying liquor license for Sue Ann Robbin-Sue Ann Hughes at the Tucson Dragway and Michelle Schuyler at Scottland Country Club.
Second. Motion in a second to close the hearing and approve those items. Any objections? Hearing non? Motion carries. Moving on to County Administrator, Items 17A and B. These are hearings.
No, I think we passed that Supervisor.
We did.
Madam Chair, yeah.
Yeah, we did. I'm sorry, 17 was what was going on.
That's okay.
Flood Control. Let's move on then. Item 18 has been continued for 30 days, so that brings us to Item 19, Hearing Modification of a Rezoning Condition, CO9-03-32, Lee et al., Orange Grove Road rezoning. Staff report quick one.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, this request modifies a rezoning condition, a change of use allowed in that particular zone. The request is to modify three rezoning conditions. One has been worked out with the Transportation Department. In terms of modifying conditions to enable requirement to construct a right turn lane, that will be followed by decisions from the Department of Transportation with the applicant to decide whether that is necessary or not. Item 7C, required provision of internal access to the west of the subject property. There would be no way to connect to the property to the west because it's been cut off, so that one is requested for waiver. Item 11 is adherence to PDP, as approved at the public hearing. Obviously, it's a change of a use that the difference is from a one and two-story office building to a two-story assisted living center. This use is allowed, but actually it's less intense in terms of parking and traffic than the use that was originally approved. Staff recommends approval and will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Colton, I just want to clarify that the Number 7A, which requires those improvements to Orange Grove with the right turn lane, is that requirement just being modified, which means it'll be reviewed, or is it being waived? Because I read the background material, it kind of sounds to me like in the background material that it might be waived, which I don't think is a good idea.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, look at 7A. The part, the second sentence is being deleted per staff recommendation. That says these improvements shall include, but may not be limited to, construction of a right turn lane. The part that remains is that the owner developer will provide off-site improvements to Orange Grove Road as determined necessary by the Department of Transportation so that as they move into the development plan stage, they can work out whether or not they're, either that's necessary or not necessary without coming back to the Board.
Okay. So the Department of Transportation approves of that. Okay. Because I saw that you had a great concern about the safety of that right turn lane being unlimited, so, okay. With that, if I would like to...
Well, this is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to this item at this time? Supervisor Miller.
With that, I move to close the public hearing and approve CO9-03-32, Lee et al., Orange Grove Road rezoning to waive condition Number 7C to provide internal process access to the property to the west and modification of rezoning condition Number 11 to change the restrictive use on the primary development plan from an office complex to a plan for a two-story assisted living center building totaling 94,626 square feet and as recommended by staff in accordance with the applicant's request, as well as modifying condition 7A requiring improvements to Orange Grove Road as determined by the Department of Transportation to include construction of a right-hand turn lane.
Chair.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing non? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Last but more personal, please.
Yeah, just a second. I think the gentleman here was here on item 18. And that's been continued for 30 days to December 15.
Well, as a construction in right across the street from me, I don't know what the decision, what Mr. Wyver's objection is.
Well, the item's been continued for 30 days and we will hear December 15. I think that our staff in Development Services probably, I think this was a hearing officer situation, but I think that they can provide you with the information you're requesting. Some of that probably is available online, but Mr. Colton, seated behind you, can assist you in getting you the information you desire.
Well...
So, but I'd make, it has been continued for 30 days at the request of the applicant.
It has been continued for 30 days.
You will, you will have that chance. You've got 30 days to come.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor personally.
Madam Chair, I would just like to mention my friend Arlen Colton and the fact that he's going to be retiring from the county soon and so, you know, he's here today.
Is this the last time we'll see you, Arlen? No?
I don't think so.
No, I'm sure we'll see you again. Well, what a highly technical job and Arlen does a really good job of explaining things and working with the citizens of Pima County. And I've always appreciated the work that you do, Arlen. And your friendship and your candor is always appreciated, so, thank you, sir.
All right. Then let's move on to Item 20, Resolution 2015-87. This is a traffic resolution. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to this item at this time? If not, let's pleasure the Board.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I move to close the public hearing and approve Traffic Resolution Number 2015-87.
There's a motion in a second. Any objections? Hearing non? Motion carries. Moving on to the agenda, the Garden Kitchen, Item Number 1, Board of Supervisors sitting as Board of Supervisors, in Resolution 2015-88. Let's pleasure the Board on this item.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I move to approve the Garden Kitchen Resolution Number 2015-88.
Is there a second? Motion in a second. Any objections? Hearing non? Motion carries. Moving on to Human Resources, Meet and Confir Memorandum standing. We have, this was with SEIU, we have several members of SEIU that wish to address us on this issue. Mr. Mendoza.
Board, Mr. Huckleberry, my name is Arlen Mendoza. I'm the President of SEIU of Arizona Local 48, and we support the adoption of this SEIU. We're really proud of the work we've done this year. However, there are two, not included in this agreement, are two proposals that County Administration rejected. And I'm going to speak to these items because we think that these proposals really could help, you know, save the county money in retention and productivity costs. And so we'll ask the Board of Supervisors to consider taking future action on these items as well. First, updating nondiscrimination policies to include gender identity and gender expression is an easy but necessary change. By including gender identity and gender expression, the county will make clear to employment residents that we are committed to inclusive workplaces and will not tolerate discrimination. The reasons to update nondiscrimination policies are numerous, and this change will cost us nothing. You know, frankly, we were a little surprised that this was met with opposition at the table by County Administration, but we hope the Board can take action on this item in the future. Second, we proposed adopting paid parental leave for county employees. Parental leave could be a win-win. By providing paid parental leave, the county will be seen as a leader in Arizona in addressing the changing demographics and values of the workforce and will improve its ability to retain and attract the best, brightest, and most productive county workforce. And taxpayers will benefit because we won't see our tax dollars being used to train and retrain employees that leave. And adopting this policy will also help protect our catastrophic leave bank. The joy of a new child is not a catastrophic event, yet right now approximately 25% of catastrophic leave is used for parental leave. And, you know, without addressing parental leave, the cat bank will face issues in the future. And more and more employers are adopting parental leave. You know, we're seeing a lot of tech companies, Googles, you know, Netflix, but even locally, the U of A, Banner Medical Center have recognized the advantages of these policies, and so we should take some of the same steps. It could be smart business for Pima County.
Just quickly, does TMC also recognize or do you remember?
I'll need to check though. And I'll be back. And so over the last few months, our union and our partners have been in contact with you regarding meet confer in these items. And in August, we provided you and Mr. Huckleberry with research supporting these proposals. And this is not a decision that we expect you to take lightly. But we need, it absolutely is the right thing to do to help Pima County, to help working families, and to help taxpayers. And so we really do look forward to working with you to make this work best for everybody. And we really do want to stress that, that we look forward to working with you on it. And so we ask you today to support Pima County workers, to first of all approve this MOU and to take action to update county nondiscrimination policies and adopt paid parental leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Abigail Jensen.
Board. My name is Abigail Jensen. I'm the Vice President and General Counsel of the Southern Arizona Gender Alliance, and I also am the Head of the County Attorney's Office. I am here not on behalf of the Public Attorney's Office, but speaking on behalf of myself and It was a surprise to us when we rediscovered that Pima County does not already include specific gender identity and gender expression in its nondiscrimination policies. There is, of course, a legal theory, as you all know, that is already covered as a type of sex discrimination, but the failure to specifically enumerate those categories leaves both the public and the employees and supervisors and managers ignorant of everything that is covered. And then in fact, this is a priority for Pima County. I myself am a transgender employee of Pima County. My experience has been fortunate in every way, for which I'm very grateful. Always, I do know other transgender employees who experience has not been very pleasant and have many concerns. So adopting this policy and then following it up with training, you know, of managers and supervisors about what this entails, informing employees that this is covered so they know what their rights are, will help improve the environment for employees of Pima County. Will also enhance the public perception of Pima County as an employer who is fair and just. There's much research showing that transgender employees who are treated well on the job are protected by nondiscrimination proposals are very loyal, very productive employees. They like to stay where they're treated right. And that's, so that's a very positive thing. We also support the adoption of the paid parental leave policy, although I'm past the point where that's likely to be part of my own life. Transgender people and transgender nonconforming people are parents, and having the ability to have paid leave, to adequately care and bond with their children, whether natively born or their own or adopted, is very important. So I thank the Board and I support you in approving an MOU with the addition of the nondiscrimination policy and the paid parental leave.
Thank you. Jim Owen.
My name is Jim Owen, and I serve on the Meet and Confir Committee. It's the first committee I ever served on, and I've got to tell you, it was a surprise. I've been working since I'm 11 years old. The last 40 years, I mostly had jobs that do hard physical labor. I'm used to going home at night, being exhausted, but feeling good about the accomplishments of the day. The thing I found out about who worked on it, the committee, is you're just exhausted at the end of the day. You've been waiting eight months for a sense of accomplishment on that committee, and I'm hoping you'll give it to us today. Eight months ago, we set about to try and find things to bring to that table, and the criteria we had was it had to be good for the employees, it had to be good for the county, and it had to be common sense. And we found a lot of those, including the changes to the nondiscrimination language is an example. It doesn't cost the county a dime. It may prevent potential future lawsuits against the county, and yet we couldn't get any of it. There were several items like that, and we're hoping that... Personally, the one that was similar to that to me, commonsense-wise, was promotional probation. When you start with a county, you serve 12 months probation. If you're good, that makes sense. They don't know how good you are at your job, but if you are good at your job, you may be promoted. And if you're promoted, you have to serve another 12 months probation. Now, when they hire somebody from the street, they don't know anything about them, but they don't even know about the employees that they promoted. It doesn't make sense to us. In fact, there are several people in the county who turn down promotions because they're afraid to put their pensions in jeopardy with another probation. So this policy actually stops a county from getting the best workers, the workers they want, into that job. We suggest, we suggest a six-month probation. Then go anywhere. So anyway, we're hoping that you'll see fit to approve the MOU and look at these other changes and send us home with a sense of accomplishment so we can sleep in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And it'd be interesting to get information on promotional probation, to see how other public sector entities handle it as well as private sector.
Thank you. Yes, there are several that might be able to be treated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Woodward. I'm sorry.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Everything they said already. My name is Michael Woodward. I'm a member of the Board of the Southern Arizona Gender Alliance and the Director of advocacy for the organization, also on the Board of Equality Arizona, which is a statewide organization working for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender rights. And I wanted to add my support as well and ask you for your support of approving the MOU, which includes the nondiscrimination language around gender identity and also paid parental leave, but specifically to address the nondiscrimination policies. It's nationally recognized practices at this point to include this language. The private sector recognizes these protections. 75% of 500, 4500 companies have adopted this language, including the University of Arizona, Raytheon, and several other local employees. 90% of transgender people who are employed, lucky enough to be employed, report mistreatment and harassment of the job. As a former county employee myself, I can confirm that was true for me too. President Obama also extended these protections to federal employees last year, and I think one of the really important things to point out is that recipients of funds from the Violence Against Women Act were required to include gender identity in all of our county policies, anything related to both employees as well as recipients of operation of programs. What we're asking for right now is just to protect employees and... What we're asking for right now is just to protect employees, and, yeah. So I'd really like to ask you for your support, and really appreciate the support you've shown us so far. And so please take action on the discrimination ordinance and paid parental leave as well.
Thank you. That concludes, both from the Madam Chair and you who wish to speak. Let's pleasure the Board.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
You know, I want to thank everybody involved in the meet confer process and committee, and you're right, it is painful sitting through meetings sometimes. You know, I, I don't even want to say anything. Enough sad, you know, what's been going on around here lately. However, I think we need to approve the meet confer memorandum of understanding that's in front of us today. And the outstanding issues are unfortunate, and they probably should have been covered during meet confer, and it's, it's almost bad to see some of these things politicized in this manner by our administration. However, that means that I think we need to move forward today on the gender equity issue and make sure that that language is included in today's MOU. That's been discussed roundly, so that language does exist. It's not a problem. We all know what we're talking about here, and that can be included today. The issue of parental leave, Mr. Huckleberry came up with some numbers last week in terms of what it would cost the county in terms of hard costs. I'd like to see us work on that a little bit, see if we can get closer to being gender neutral on that issue, but still-
Revenue neutral.
Revenue neutral.
You said gender neutral.
Well, that was a loaded comment. Revenue neutral. Thank you, everyone. And we can talk about that in January, I think is a good time. Gives us some time to work some things out, to further discuss this issue, make sure that we come up with something that works for everybody off the bat. The issue of promotional probation, I think, is another good one, and I'd like to see some research done on that, as our Chair suggested, and I'd like to see that revisited in January before we come back with the issue of parental leave, if everybody's okay with that.
So your motion then is to approve the MOU with the addition of the gender neutral language and then-
Gender equity.
Gender equity language, and then to continue the discussion on parental leave and probation-
Promotional probation.
Promotional probation for gender.
That's correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any objections?
Madam Chair, I had a question on another issue that was included in here, and I think it would be appropriate for the county attorney to answer it. This is regarding the 4,800 hours of paid time per year to be utilized by the Union of DesiMees. There's a lawsuit, I'm sure you're aware of it, in Phoenix over employees using their time to actively advocate on a union we have. It doesn't serve a public purpose, that's what the lawsuit said, and there's another, the Goldwater Institute is now seeking an injunction against this in another case. This was upheld in Annapolis Court, and the allegation is that it violates the gift clause of public money to private individuals or corporations requiring the government to prove it receives direct tangible benefits from a subsidy. Have we evaluated this lawsuit to ensure that we're protecting taxpayers from a future lawsuit?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, we have examined the decision between Chitum slash Houy versus Tchichio. She came out in Division 1, and as you know, this Board approved a further appeal in that case. We are appealing that to the Arizona Supreme Court along with FLE, which is the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. I do believe that the provisions in the current memorandum of understanding are compliant with the law. I think they differ significantly from the conditions that were present in the Phoenix case. Couple of things that are important for the gift clause, you have to have a public purpose, okay? And the second thing is you have to be getting your money's worth in essence. And what we have in this MOU is we have delineation of certain kinds of activities that are limited to the 4,800 hours, and so they're not purely union activities, they're activities that benefit the county. And additionally, it's required that HR vet and approve each and every one of these requests. So we're going to be relying on Alan Bosani and his staff to look at these requests, and he's going to make that analysis of whether or not he believes it's a public purpose and we're getting our money worth, and it's not a dollar you don't get to banks or something like that. So with those provisions in there, I think, I think this is adequate and complies with the law.
Okay, so it is significant, I mean, there's enough of a difference between what happened in Phoenix, the Police Officers Union utilizing those hours to do union activities. We're going to, I guess, as they approve them, they're going to make sure that it actually provides a benefit for that county.
Yes, ma'am, I believe so. The Phoenix contract contains literally no constraints on what they could have done with the money. It was very open, isn't it? One of the problems that the court had with it, it's much different than what we drafted here from the county, so I'm satisfied that this is defensible.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, there is any further discussion? Any then objection to the motion? Hearing non. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item three, under real property contract with friends of Grove's Ranch. I'll move that item.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. Moving on to contracts and awards. Greenberg Card LLP, item four. Let's pleasure the Board. Supervisor.
I've got item four, Greenberg Card, for $100,000.
Second. Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. Moving on to facilities, management of items five and six. Let's pleasure the Board on these items.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'm going to go ahead and move items five and six.
Supervisor Miller. I'd like to divide the question at a separate vote. I'll move six.
I remove my motion.
You have a motion on item five.
I move on five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. Moving on to item six. Let's pleasure the Board.
Madam Chair, move the item.
Motion in a second. Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, I'm voting now on this because this is for the building on the wastewater department, but I didn't approve it. Thank you.
Any further objections? Hearing no further objections. Motion carries four to one. Item seven and eight under procurement. Let's pleasure the Board on these two items.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor.
Before we go, I'd like to move to divide the question.
Okay. Item seven. Let's pleasure the Board.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and move item seven. Solicitation number 51312.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
On this item, it is for rental of the equipment to do road repairs by the Department of Transportation Department because it's specialized equipment that we don't have. My question is for the county administrator. Have we explored outsourcing this directly to a pavement preservation company rather than having to lease equipment? Have we done an analysis of that?
Mr. Huckleberry.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, with regard to these specific pieces of equipment, I can, I believe that if we do outsource a significant amount of pavement preservation already to private contractors, this equipment is more than likely necessary for a variety of other maintenance activities of the Department of Transportation. It can be answered more directly by a new transportation director.
Ms. Carmelia.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, we, in the past, we have generally had equipment that was, that we need, specialized equipment to go out and get. As an example, we're renting a five cubic air dump truck for use on the pop hole patching. It supplements the patch trucks for the additional crews that we have out there. We have done an analysis as to whether it might be more cost-effective for us to buy the equipment or versus renting it, but some of the equipment is just very specialized that we use, that we believe, as we work with FLE, that it's better for us to go out when we need to go out to rent the equipment. I should also sort of say that we go through procurement, and a lot of other county departments use this contract. So we, DOT, don't use all of it, but it's actually, we maybe only are using about 50 to 60% of the budget capacity in the contract, and a lot of other departments also use the contract.
Facilities, parts, I mean, we talk of the-
That's correct.
Those are probably the prime.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Well, wait a minute. So, Madam Chair, excuse me. You say you use, Priscilla, excuse me, you say you use 50 to 60% of the value of this particular award? Is that correct? Did I understand that correctly?
That's correct. And so, and this is over a five-year period, is generally what we do, and so, in the past, we've had the contract for three years, and we have to put additional monies into it, and, you know, because of the, we've used up the contract, we and other departments.
And what other departments use it?
It is, I'm sitting here looking at my list here, procurement, excuse me, FLE, equipment, I should also say it's also down, but it's parts as well as flood control district.
Okay, so do they pay their fair share of just-
Oh, yes, yes.
-their own department?
That's correct.
Is that listed as that in the item?
That's because-
And when you said that, that concerned me, just to make sure that we're being transparent here about how these dollars are spent, since there seems to be so many questions about pavement preservation.
Yes. No, for this particular one, other departments use, rent, use our contract to rent equipment that they need for their-
Right, I understand that.
That comes from their budget. I think that's what he's asking, that they're using it, the amount of the rental then comes from their budget, not transportation.
That's absolutely correct.
I think that was this point.
That's my point exactly.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Yes.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the Board on this item?
I would have, I would-
Nope. Okay. You did. You got a second from Supervisor Carol. Okay. So we have a motion in a second. We have discussion. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. Moving on to item eight. What's pleasure of the Board?
Move the item.
Motion in a second. Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. Moving on to real property, item nine. What's the pleasure of the Board on item nine?
I move the item.
Second. Motion in a second. Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. In terms of items 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, does anybody want to divide the question on those? If not, let's pleasure the Board on those.
I'll move the other one.
Motion in a second. Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. That bears to bring us to the conclusion of today's board meeting. If there are no objections, this board meeting stands adjourned.